Well, good evening or afternoon, late afternoon, everyone. Today is April twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three. This is a special session of your unified government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas. Before I call this meeting to order, I want to announce that we have individuals attending remotely as well as on site. All participants joining by phone should mute their phones, please, when not speaking to avoid background noise. During the meeting, please make sure that you announce yourself by name and title every time you speak. And this is specifically so that the public that is participating knows who exactly who is speaking. It's also critical, given the number of remote participants and current guidance from the Kansas Attorney Journal's Office. And when you speak, please make sure you speak clearly into the microphone at a tone where everyone can hear you. So there can be an accurate capturing for the record. I'll now call this meeting into order. Clerk roll call, please.
Thank you, and good evening. You are hereby notified that I have called a special session of the Unified Government of Wyandotte County in Kansas City, Kansas, to be conducted in a hybrid format on Thursday, April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, at five P M. in the fifth floor conference room of the municipal office building, seven zero one North Seventh Street, Kansas City, Kansas, regarding a board of health update on the community health assessment. Before I call roll, I'll make a note that we do have absence memos for Commissioners Johnson, Davis, and Townsend. Roll call, McKeonan. Ramirez.
Here.
Kane. Barkley.
Here.
Knights. Bynum.
Here.
Burrows.
Here.
Garner.
Here.
Thank you, clerk. Tonight, we have one item on our agenda this evening, and it's an update on the community health assessment. I'll recognize Alan House as the Assistant County Administrator for the presentation.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. We have this evening presentation on the community health assessment from the Wyandotte County Health Department. While there's been a lot of focus on COVID over the last couple of years, in the background, the Community Health Improvement Plan was also running full speed ahead, which focuses on the depressing health needs of the community. Now, coming to the end of that cycle, we start anew with the Community Health Assessment, which will, as you'll hear, lead into the Community Health Improvement Plan. You also see in this plan that there's a continued focus on equity that really sharpened during COVID, and it's continued now into the Community Health Assessment and the work of the Health Department. And I want to say just appreciation for all the staff that put a lot of time into creating this Community Health Assessment and all that went into it. And we have forty-five minutes, well, forty now, with a lot of content to cover. So I will turn it over to Amber Banner, the Acting Director and team, to run us through this. Amber?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, County Administrator, Amber Banner, Acting Health Department Director, myself, along with several of our Health Department staff, will be presenting to you on Wyandotte County's Community Health Assessment and its results. Thank you for having us this evening. I am waiting for some slides to come up so that I can begin the presentation. Thank you. Slide, please. So for today's presentation, we're going to walk you through a bit of an overview, okay, of the CHA process itself. Well, we will also talk a little bit about the methodology. Then we'll roll into some health outcomes. We'll also talk about the community health concerns and barriers. And then we will close up with a twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-eight CHIP development process. Slide, please. So I'd like to start by level-setting a little bit just with what the Community Health Assessment is. It is essentially an assessment of how healthy our community is and how our county actually is living, whether it is as healthy as it could be or if there are some areas of improvement. And so it's determined through a variety of data sources and methods. So both qualitative, like through focus groups or community listening sessions, and then quantitative through items like surveys. So as part of this assessment, we also want to leverage some national data. So we also use the census and we also use what we call the Burfice, which is the Behavioral Risk Factor Surveillance System. We collect all of these different data to better understand and gain a picture of the comprehensive health of the community. We conduct the Community Health Assessment every five years, and it is a requirement to remain accredited through the Public Health Accreditation Board. One of the best things I can say that our Community Health Assessment does is give voice to the community residents. So their feedback really helps to inform us of the health barriers and health concerns and social health needs that they experience. And we also believe that this rich data is important for all U G departments to become aware of and familiar with as each U G department's work impacts the lives and therefore the health of each and every resident in Wyandotte County. So it's a very nice guide for ensuring that health remains a lens in all policies. And now I'll turn it over to Elizabeth. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Thanks so much for your time. My name is Elizabeth Gronewig. I am the Chief Epidemiologist for the Health Department, and I will be introducing you to some of the information that we found throughout our Community Health Assessment, or CHA for short. In public health, we love our acronyms, and so you'll hear us use the terms CHA and CHIP a lot throughout this presentation. So just know that the CHA is the Community Health Assessment, and then our CHIP is our Community Health Improvement Plan. So one of the most important things about our CHA is that it is founded in data. One of the most important parts of a CHA is that you're looking at all of the data. It's very much an objective look at the overall health status of the county. And so we looked at two different kinds of data to found this report. The first is primary data and then also secondary data. Primary data is data that we collect as an organization for our utilization. And so we collected three different kinds of primary data. A community concern survey, which I'll talk a bit more about, as well as four community forums that were held throughout Wyandotte County and each of the different parts of Wyandotte County. And then we also have focus groups that we worked with some of our community partners to hold, and we held about a dozen of those focus groups. We also used a lot of secondary data, as Amber alluded to in her last slide. Secondary data is data that's collected by other organizations that we then utilize. And there's too many secondary data sources to name them all right now, but, you know, some of those examples, like the U S Census Bureau, C D C data sources, things like that have all been incorporated throughout this report. I wanted to quickly show you what the timeline of our CHA development looks like, really because I want to give you all kind of an idea of how extensive this process is and how time-consuming it is. This is really an intense, detailed process that we've undergone here at the Health Department to make sure that we are giving you and the community the best data available. So we actually first started developing our CHA back in winter of last year, so like February twenty twenty-two. But a lot of the data collection started in June and throughout the summer months. So we collected survey data, which I'll talk a bit more about in the next few slides throughout the summer. And then later in the summer and fall, we had some of those community forums and focus groups I talked about. And then the winter months were really focused on the data analysis, which is quite time-intensive. A lot of people think that, you know, epidemiologists are just wizards that whip up all this data and then poof, there it is. But it actually is pretty time-consuming to put all of that data together into a report. And then we're pleased to share that yesterday, the full Community Health Assessment went live on our website as well. So one of the biggest data components in our CHA was the Community Concern Survey. We worked with an organization called the E T C Institute, which is located in Johnson County, to survey our community. And so we knew from the beginning that there were two things that were really important for this survey. The first is that it is a random sample. So quite often, you see people utilizing a kind of convenience sampling where you just share a survey out and whoever answers, answers. But we wanted this to be random so we could try to hear from all voices in Wyandotte County. And secondly, we wanted this to be a representative sample. So that means representative of the diversity within Wyandotte County. We all know that Wyandotte County is very diverse, and so we want to make sure that the feedback we're getting represents that diversity. And so it can be a little tricky to make sure you're getting a representative sample. But we are happy to share that the survey we conducted is representative of Wyandotte County's different zip codes, age groups, incomes, education levels, and race and ethnicity. The only place we fell a little bit short on a representative sample is households that have children. We had about twenty-one percent of households with children that responded to our survey. It's closer to a third overall in Wyandotte County. And, you know, it's hard to survey households with children because they're usually very busy with their children. So we tried to kind of make up for that in other ways, but overall, we're really happy to share that this is a really representative sample that we have. And so the kind of two guiding ways that we decided on what to focus on for our Community Health Assessment is the first two questions we ask in the survey. So the first question that we asked is for people to identify the three biggest health concerns that they have in Wyandotte County. And then the second question we ask is what are the three biggest health barriers in Wyandotte County? And so I'll show you graphs in the next few slides that break these results down further, but here are the top six. And I think a lot of, I see people already kind of nodding because a lot of this is things that we've already been somewhat aware of. But the health concerns that came up as the top six were community violence, drug misuse, mental health, chronic diseases, poor nutrition and obesity, and air pollution or environmental health concerns. And then those biggest barriers were healthcare access, employment and income, affordable housing, violence and crime, health literacy, and racism or other forms of discrimination. So I'm going to go through this slide real quick. I know it's a little blurry and hard to read the text, but what I really want to point out here, that very top bar where you see that over sixty percent of people responded, that's community violence. So by far, what our survey found is that community violence is a big concern in our community. And then this is that barriers crushed and broken down. And again, you know, we see some clear leading barriers here, healthcare access, employment, affordable housing, and then again, violence. So I'm going to focus a bit now on looking at the overall health outcomes in Wyandotte County. So really, our report starts really broadly and then gets down more into some specific topics like the ones I showed you before. But we wanted to start with just talking about what the overall health outcomes look like in Wyandotte County. And to assess that, we looked at a variety of secondary data sources. One of those is called County Health Rankings. And so what County Health Rankings does, it's an impartial organization that looks across the United States at every state within the United States and ranks the health outcomes and health factors for each county in that state. And so unfortunately, there is a lot of room for improvement in Wyandotte County in terms of our overall health status. So out of the hundred and four counties ranked in Kansas, Wyandotte County ranks a hundred and third. And then a hundred and four out of a hundred and four for health factors. If you're interested, you can go to this link and read the full report of County Health Rankings to kind of see what things factor into our ranking. But overall, there is a lot that we need to work on as a county to improve health. We also looked at secondary data showing causes of death in Wyandotte County because when you look at causes of death, you might be able to see places where you can intervene or prevent death. And so that far-left column there has the overall leading causes of death in Wyandotte County, heart disease, cancer, COVID accidents, and chronic lower respiratory diseases. We've broken it down by race and ethnicity because that also tells a story of what's going on in our community. I especially wanted to highlight those last two columns. You can see that the leading causes of death are, well, the number four causes of death for our Hispanic and our black, non-Hispanic residents is homicide. That is not one of the top five or even top ten causes of death for our white, non-Hispanic residents. I also wanted to highlight that for our Hispanic residents, COVID was the leading cause of death. And unfortunately, I think a lot of us saw that play out in real time when we saw the disparities that were happening throughout COVID. We also looked at life expectancy data. For those that aren't familiar with life expectancy, it's a measure that determines how long someone is expected to live at the time of their birth. It's kind of a complicated calculation that I won't go into, but it depends a lot on geography and the factors around where that person is born. And so the overall life expectancy in Wyandotte County is forty, or seventy-four point seven years. But again, we see some disparities here. In particular, I wanted to call out that for our black residents, the life expectancy is seventy-one point three years. When you break it down by census tracts in Wyandotte County, you see some even more stark disparities. So there is a twenty-one-year difference between the census tract with the lowest life expectancy and the highest life expectancy in Wyandotte County. So you can see that sixty-two point five years on our, one of those census tracts close to downtown, and then in the western part of the county, eighty-three point seven. I think all of us in this room know that this is about a twenty-minute car ride. So I think it's really significant to note that this is not a big geographical distance that we're seeing these disparities. It's really quite close together that a lot of factors are happening to create these disparities. So moving on to in a little more detail, I'm going to review some of the health concerns that were identified by our residents. And these are the concerns that I reviewed previously in our slides about the top concerns identified in our survey. So starting with the number one health concern according to residents that we surveyed, community violence. Sixty-two percent of our survey respondents said that this was one of their top three biggest health concerns. Thirty-eight percent also said that this is a barrier to being healthy in Wyandotte County. We also asked about safety in our survey. And about half of people said that they felt safe during the daytime, but less than half, only forty percent said that they felt safe at night. So there's definitely perceived concerns about safety in Wyandotte County. I think it's also really important to call out that homicide is a leading cause of death. And if you're fifteen to forty-four years old in Wyandotte County, homicide is the number one leading cause of death, more than suicide or overdoses or cancer, any other cause of death for our residents of that age group, homicide's the leading cause. The number two concern identified by residents is substance misuse. And as many of us know, overdoses have continued to sharply increase in the last few years. And unfortunately, there are currently no inpatient facilities to treat substance use disorder in Wyandotte County. Mental health was the number three biggest health concern. The majority of our survey respondents said that they have a mental health or a mental illness or someone in their household has one. And then we also heard so many stories across the community about how COVID had a significant impact on mental health. We also heard a lot from community members that there's a high demand for mental health services across the county. It was identified as the number one way that the county could improve overall health in Wyandotte County. And we heard a lot about how difficult accessing mental health care is in Wyandotte County. Thirty-three percent of people that we surveyed said that they could not access their care for their mental health concerns. And the biggest reasons were affordability, they didn't know where to go, or they said wait lists were too long to access care. Finally, chronic diseases and obesity was the number four biggest health concern and number five biggest health concern in Wyandotte County. Our obesity rate in Wyandotte County is a remarkable forty-six percent. And in addition, secondary data shows that thirty-two percent of our residents report no form of leisure, physical activity. And, you know, chronic diseases such as heart disease, diabetes, kidney disease, liver disease are all also leading causes of death in Wyandotte County. From here, I'm going to turn it over to my fellow epidemiologist, Hannah Connor, and she's going to talk in a bit more detail about some of the health barriers that we identified in our assessment.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners and County Administrator. Hi, sorry, getting used to the mic. My name's Hannah Connor. As Elizabeth so graciously said, I am the Social Epidemiologist at the Health Department, and I'm going to cover more about those barriers that we saw on slide ten. The number one health barrier that was identified by Wyandotte County respondents in our survey was healthcare access. Healthcare access can include a lot of things, including affordability, quality of care, convenience, and health insurance cover, coverage. Without proper access to healthcare, health issues cannot be prevented or managed, and poor health outcomes become more likely. Nineteen percent of survey respondents had a problem getting healthcare in the last year, and we'll dive into why more in the next slide. However, before we move on, I want to point out that nearly nineteen percent of Wyandotte County residents do not have health insurance, and we know this from secondary data. Also, within that number, there are some hidden disparities. Only six percent of white residents are uninsured, where sixteen and thirty-six percent of black and Hispanic residents, respectively, are uninsured. So to dig into that first point on the last slide a little bit more, the top reasons for delaying care were cost, inability to get appointments soon enough, and the lack of insurance. We also heard from our focus groups and community forums that participants frequently were concerned by the cost of bills, and they also frequently had to go out of county to get the care that they preferred. Additionally, some of the top challenges in obtaining medications did include also cost and lack of coverage by insurance. The second highest rated health barrier was jobs and education. Jobs relate to health because having opportunities for well-paying jobs with benefits like health insurance and paid time off are important to a healthy lifestyle. They allow for families to pay for their housing, transportation, opportunities for their children, savings, and even leisure time. However, in our survey, forty-three percent of respondents either disagreed or strongly disagreed to the prompt that they believe that their community has enough jobs that pay enough money to live a healthy life. Access to education was also rated as a barrier, though not as highly as jobs and income. Nearly twenty percent of our respondents disagreed or strongly disagreed with the statement that they believe that students in their neighborhood give quality education to all students. This is important because, as we know, education opens up more opportunities for good-paying jobs. The third biggest health barrier was affordable housing. And what we mean by affordable housing is housing that our residents can afford and pay less than thirty percent of their household income to sustain that mortgage, rent, and utilities. However, we know, again, from secondary data, that about a third of Wyandotte County residents or households are considered cost burden. In fact, when we asked our survey respondents what would make their community healthier, the fourth highest-ranked option for what would improve the community's health is more access to affordable housing. And if you look at this chart here, nearly fifty percent of respondents answered that in the last year they at least sometimes worried about having enough money to pay for their monthly bills. That's including the rent, the mortgage, and their utilities. We are fortunate, I'm going to go back, sorry. We are fortunate to have a chip that was able to work on these barriers that I've gone over for the last five years, and we are going to continue to work on those barriers. The last barrier I want to talk about didn't actually rank in the top three or top five. It fell between health literacy and education. But however, as we went through and stratified our data, meaning looked at it through lenses and through for each race and ethnicity, we found significant disparities. So overall, hold on, it's going forward instead of backwards. Okay. I apologize. Okay, I'm going to stop clicking. Okay, there's a different button for going backwards. I apologize. This is my first time coming to one of these. Okay, so thank you. So twenty percent of respondents just about said that racism was among the top three barriers to health. However, over a quarter of black respondents reported that they have felt emotionally upset, so angry, sad, or frustrated as a result of how they were treated based on their race. We also found when stratifying by race and ethnicity, that nearly forty percent of black respondents said that racism usually or always impacts their life. How do I go back? Okay. Sorry. Thank you. Having your boss around is always important. So that compares to twenty-two percent of all respondents, twenty percent of Asian respondents, and nineteen percent of Hispanic or Latino respondents. And the top ways that this racism manifested was in getting a job, being promoted, or buying a house or car, which all of these directly relate to some of the other health barriers that we talked about previously. So as we try to achieve health equity in Wyandotte County, it's important to focus on some of these big, complicated factors that can really impact a person's health. And as we move forward, the Health Department will continue to work with its network of partners and resources to pursue health in light of these concerns and barriers. And our chip coordinators will continue to elaborate on that a bit more now. Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah. My name is Blake Hensley. I'm one of the Community Health Improvement Plan coordinators. And so with all this information, we wanted to leave a little bit on a high note, talking about what the community wants. And also, we'll talk a little bit about what partners are doing in the community. So for the community needs, so the top five that you can see there, number one is definitely mental health services. And then the other five, which are safe places to walk and play, services and programs for people with disabilities or older adults, and housing affordability and housing assistance. And then lastly, in that top five, is violence prevention programming. So all of those things are things that allow people to be more healthy, be able to get out, have more leisure time in our community, and are important to support at many levels with community partners, at the government level, and such. And so all of those really look into building social connections, building that social infrastructure, and then providing, just leveraging existing resources that are in our community. And so that brings us to our community assets. We took some time in our Community Health Assessment to list out some assets, and that includes groups like coalitions, other nonprofit organizations, community programs, and community resources that are all already working to improve health in Wyandotte County. And we're really leveraging those partnerships in our Community Health Improvement Plan, and we hope to bring more of them along as we go into this new CHIP cycle. And for that, I will pass it off to Susan, who will talk more about that.
Great. Thank you, Blake. And hi, Commissioners, Mayor. My name is Susan Kamen, and I am also a chip coordinator at the Health Department. And I'll be providing a high-level overview of the process in which we'll take all of this great information from the Community Health Assessment and turn it into a Community Health Improvement Plan. So this diagram shows the CHA CHIP cycle, as we like to call it, and we're really at the top of, top right of that cycle circle. So assessing and understanding the data, we've done just that through our Community Health Assessment. And there's a lot of information, and we need to set some priorities and plan with our community stakeholders to better focus our efforts, identify priorities, shared goals, and strategies that will really point our collaborative resources, organizations, programs, initiatives in the community to be working in sync towards those strategies and priorities in the plan. And that's really what our chip does, and we're excited to be able to use this information in our Community Health Assessment to work with community stakeholders, community members, in developing that new plan, which will be our twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-eight Community Health Improvement Plan. And then we'll move into my favorite part of the work, which is really taking that data, those goals, the strategies, those objectives, and turning them into action in the community in initiatives, projects, programs that directly service the lives of people here in Wyandotte County. And so that Community Health Improvement Plan process is actually happening right now. And in front of you, you have the CHIP Year Five booklet for our twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-three Community Health Improvement Plan. And in that booklet, you have an example of some of the strategies, projects, programs that we've been working on alongside our partners. And so I invite you to take a look at that, and we're excited to use this information from this most recent CHA to move forward with our next chip. And it's also important to note that we'll continue to monitor and evaluate this, our progress in the chip. We do a CHA every five years to do just that and to intentionally check back into the community and hear about their health gaps, needs, and how those have changed or become greater priorities. And so to provide a bit of a high-level timeline of the CHA to CHIP development, we really want to take the springtime and early summer to present the CHA to our community and to stakeholders so that they, too, can become familiar with the data and the information that they provided us through with this process. And then in the summer, really looking at June through the end of August, we will be working on our CHIP development that'll look like a series of strategy and goal-setting meetings for community partners, but also for community members to work with us into sifting through all of this information and identifying those priorities, goal strategies that we want to move forward with. And the goal is to have a finalized twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-eight CHIP at the end of the year, early twenty twenty-four. And all while we're doing that, we're continuing to work on our twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-three plan. We've still got some We've still got some uh programs and initiatives that we're working on. And I want to thank our partners in that work uh for really uh devoting a lot of their time and resources into making that a reality for our community. And we want to thank you for your time this evening and wanted to leave you with just some resources. Um, again, um, our Community Health Assessment uh is found on our website, and there's a QR code that you can scan. Uh, and then our Community Health Improvement Plan is also available on our website. Uh, our current one that we're working on, uh, you can find all the booklets and all the annual reports uh on that site. And um, I know our team is eager to hear about any comments or questions that you may have. So, thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Did you have any closing remarks?
No. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for the presentation. Uh, Commissioner Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I want to thank our Public Health Department for everything that you do. Um, before I was, I'm getting my degree in education, I was a public health degree. So I understand the hard work that you're doing and uh what this information can provide for us as a commission as we go through this year, and especially during our budget season is coming, our budget cycle's coming up. And so I know that many, you know, not very many people hear about the Public Health Department. It's a department that works behind the scenes but does good work. It wasn't until the pandemic when you guys, your department was the face and voice of our government for those two years. And so I I thank you for everything that you have done to keep Wyandotte County safe. Um, one, I I do want to comment on on something on the causes of death between twenty-eighteen, twenty-twenty. What, uh, cause I was reviewing this last night, and I want to thank Alan for uh sending us this information so that we had time to brew with it and stick with it. For our um Latino population, the number one was COVID, whereas with the others, it was third. And so my question is, if if COVID was not part, if if we, in the perfect world, didn't have COVID, would you, do you believe that cancer would have been the first, the first one more so?
Yeah, um, it's it's a little hard to answer that question. A lot of it's speculative. But um typically across the US and in Wyandotte County, um, heart disease and cancer are always either first or second causes of death. And really, they take turns being the leading causes of death because the data's usually so close. Um, so it's a little hard to say, um, but it's possible.
Okay, and that, and that's, I figured, I remembered going through some of the courses, and that's always been
Yeah, it's
the cancer and uh heart disease are always back and forth with each other every year.
Yeah.
Um, but that, but that just amazes me that just our Latino population, it wasn't either of those first. It was uh, it was COVID during those two years. And so that shows especially, you know, where my district, um, I represent a um heavily Latino community. And so it's, it's important for us to make sure that we are providing that ac- that access of healthcare and services and programs. And I know we have several uh clinics that are provide, that provide care within the district. And so um, it's, I just want to thank you for everything that you do again. Um, and I hope that, you know, this, this shows that, yes, there are barriers. There's a lot of barriers. And I know the number one is people not, especially with healthcare, not being able to um pay for their healthcare or delaying their healthcare, delaying their prescription drugs, and um because they just can't afford it. But also, there, from this plan, there's things that we can do about that. So to my colleagues, let's be mindful of that when we go through budget season. Yes, we need some relief, but also there are things that people want and need. So I thank you for everything and keep up the good work.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, to that end, I would also point out the fact that uh there is an opportunity for discovery in the very, the very place that you you point out. So one of the interesting uh pieces of this, I thought, was that the life expectancy for the Hispanic population actually outranks all of us, and yet they still experience the greatest health barriers. I just found that astonishing. And it's an area of discovery for us. I mean, we really could learn a great deal from that population and how they managed to still have such a a beautiful life expectancy rate and yet overcome a great deal of health barriers. I just wanted to call that out because I think it just, it just aligns with what you were pointing out just, just there. So thank you.
Commissioner Burroughs?
Thank you, Mayor. This information is very, can be very eye-opening. But can you help me understand a a couple of the results from the survey? I want to make sure I fully understand. I'm looking at page five. Uh, well, I I guess it's page eight. I apologize. It's eight on one side, four on the other, ten on one side, and five on the other. So um, but it it talks about that community violence was the number one issue. And it's mentioned in a couple of places in here, at least within the top four. But yet, when you get to the results in the back, the community says it's mental health. And both of those issues are extremely important, and we deal with them collectively as a body. But I just concerned as to how violence slid down the uh survey at the very end when it was in the top part of the survey, you know, in in most of the survey results.
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. And um, once you kind of dive more deeply into the report, I think it'll be a little bit more clear. But there were a lot of survey questions that we asked, but three of the biggest one were, what were your biggest health concerns, your biggest health barriers? And then what are the three biggest things that we could do in Wyandotte County to improve health? And so the violence came out as number one for the biggest concerns, uh followed closely by mental health. Um, but then in terms of how we can address those issues, uh, mental health, that's where it came out as number one. Um, and so really, you know, there could be a lot of reasons for why the data shook out the way that it did. Um, a lot of people in the community might perceive that violence is a really big issue that's going to be hard for the county to address. Whereas having more mental health services seems like a more attainable thing that we could do to improve health. Um, but really, what that question where mental health came up as number one is getting at is um next steps for us. Um, next steps as a community for improving health. And so violence is important to our community. But looking forward, mental health is a way that we can really make a big impact. Does that help answer your question?
I, it it does. I understand the the reasoning for getting there. I just question if it's such an important issue with the tremendous amount of violence we had, I mean, it was a majority, oh, sorry, a majority of the respondents in two categories put violence in the community high on the list. And yet, mental health is what is what we come up with. So if I had to be king for a day and put my resources somewhere, do I put it in uh police protection to a deal with uh or public safety protection to deal with the violence in the community? Or do I go out and build mental health facilities? And I think that's what I'm looking at as a priority because yeah, they are both correlated to one another. And it just, it just kind of struck me a little bit that that was a a high mark
Yeah.
for a majority of the respondents, and yet the mental health aspect came out uh higher at at the end.
Yeah, it is definitely interesting how that data shook out the way that it did. Um, and I think that we're really fortunate that we work with a lot of really great community partners um that work in the mental health realm and also the um violence prevention. And um, we work closely with the PD, all kinds of different community partners. Um, because it's not just going to be the Health Department deciding which of these issues we're going to tackle. We're going to have to really work with our stakeholders and community partners to help us prioritize, you know, looking at the survey data as a, as a stepping stone, as a guide to decide which areas that we're going to tackle. Um, you know, whether it be mental health or violence prevention or or other issues. It's not just decided by the survey.
And and if I may add just one more thing, um, just speculating, I don't have evidence of this, but well, besides some of the numbers that we've looked at. But uh, violence is frequently concentrated and clustered and may not impact every household in Wyandotte County. And mental health is something that a lot more people can relate to more personally. So maybe they don't know somebody personally who's impacted by violence, but it does frequently make the news. Um, but they do know somebody who has developed anxiety during their teenage years or has experienced depression due to isolation. So that might be one of the reasons why that came to the forefront of what we can do to improve their community's health because maybe that's what they are more personally experienced with.
And and that's a good analogy, and I do appreciate that. I know coming through the pandemic, uh, the desocialization of our community plays into the mental health aspect quite a bit. Uh, the loss of income, loss of property, loss of loved ones all play on the mental health aspect. However, violence is mobile, and it's all over our community. It's still to come back as a high item. Um, it it, it just caught me off guard to see that that aspect was got a higher rating than us as a community not dealing with the violence. So, but thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bynum and Commissioner
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Mayor.
I just, um, Ms. Banner, I wanted to say congratulations to you on your interim director role and also appreciation to each of you for the work that you do. When we were, when we were experiencing COVID, we saw our Health Department all the time. And we've missed you. So it's nice to, nice that you're here. Um, and it's important that you bring us this information. Um, I work with older adults in my regular daytime, full-time job. And you reached out to bring a focus group to our older adults while you were doing the health assessment. And so I particularly wanted to thank you for that because we had a really great focus group with um Reverend Tony Carter, and we brought, I think, about fifteen of our older adults. And we had a great, great conversation. And so thanks for remembering us uh as you did that assessment. You have a slide here that talks about the community needs, which I see, um, I mean, to me, these are the components of the social determinants of health. And and number three is services or programs for disabled and elderly. And I just don't know that we'll ever have enough of those. But it's always good to try to attain more of really everything on your list, but obviously that stuck out for me. Um, I've been engaged with the Health Department and these health issues for a long time, beginning with when Mayor Reardon formed Healthy Communities Wyandotte, which was also a direct result of these um health rankings. And it's so frustrating to me. I I applaud you for continuing to do the work because we have the five-year chip. And I know how hard every person engaged in this chip has worked. And it is so frustrating to me, and I don't want you to go home depressed. Um, I just don't know. I guess I'd be interested in your thoughts. Is, does it truly take this long to move the needle in a community that faces so many challenges? Is that what we're dealing with? Um, I can keep going if that's the answer.
Yeah, um, I can, I can start to tackle this question, and I I appreciate you acknowledging how difficult some of these issues are to conquer. And that's something that I definitely want to highlight too, that, you know, we are wrapping up our five-year chip plan, but it's not because, you know, Susan and Blake or anyone on our team or any of these partners have failed in any way. It's because these health issues and challenges are so hard to tackle. They're so big and they're hard to tackle. And so we're not going to necessarily make progress that we can see in five years or even ten years. Uh, and a lot of that boils down to what we call in public health, social determinants of health. I'm sure a lot in this room are familiar with social determinants of health are. Um, but improving the health of Wyandotte County is not about just, you know, making people less obese or um, you know, improving people's mental health. They're just like these little, little fixes of just if you do these little things, it'll get better. It's about addressing those social determinants of health, which are then going to later, longer term, more than five years down the road, um, help to improve the health of Wyandotte County. And so I think we really, you know, at the Health Department at least, feel like if we continue to make improvements and chug along and and keep going, that we are going to see change. It's just not change that we're going to see um in in the short term, um, which can be a little bit frustrating um and and disheartening, but we're not disheartened. We, we want to continue to do this work and see what we can do for Wyandotte County. Um, and then I wanted to touch on your comment about seniors as well, um, because that wasn't really an issue that rose to the top with some of the survey data, but throughout the focus groups and forums that we did, especially the one you mentioned, we heard a lot of stories from people about senior citizens in particular and how we need to continue to address that need because um we're hearing a lot of stories about how seniors don't feel supported in Wyandotte County or that they're not feeling involved in the community. And so that's an important thing that we want to continue to work on as well. Does anyone else have anything to add?
Okay, so uh, just if I may, uh, just quickly, uh, one of the other reasons why we're not seeing that needle move as quickly as we might hope, uh, it really takes a coordinated, multi-layered approach to actually see um results, to actually see us go from uh a CHAW, the results to improvement. Furthermore, we also really lack severely quality improvement science. So that's actually taking a very intentional approach to address health issues from a quality improvement lens. So that's continuously monitoring and tracking through cycles, planning, studying, actually what we're doing, if it works, and being able to pivot in a timely fashion. We don't actually have that capacity at the Health Department. So there are multiple components that actually are required in order for us to see that needle even move slightly in ten years. So think of it more like we are working at the Health Department in a very compartmentalized area, very, very hard. So one component's working as hard as they can to try to make a difference in this area when there are multiple layers in a coordinated effort that would actually work as a machine if we had quality improvement science to help us lift that off the ground. So I want to offer that up as well. Thank you.
And I'm just going to really quickly say that we do need to transition to another event. And so I will follow up with all of you later with my comments and questions. But I'll just say to the commission, in my understanding, based on my understanding, it's going to take a generation at least to make meaningful change in any of these factors. We have to be ready for that. We have to commit to that. And we have to accept the fact that it will be accomplished after some of us are gone and be okay with that. But I'll follow up with you later.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. Um, awesome report. I I just closing, I think the one thing that stands out for me is um, the survey was great and really good information. Um, even with the crime, I don't know how much of that is fact or perception in people's minds. And perception plays into a lot of times from my experience of what people see. You know, about the broken windows theory. If you see an area that's blighted, that looks, you perceive that may be crime-ridden. But if you had looked at the data from our police chief, crime is actually down um significantly. And so, but other areas are areas of concern when you uh, when you look at uh some of the areas of concern that the public uh talked about. Um, just drilling down and see what, what are the causes? Um, I know you spoke to that and the capacity that our Health Department is lacking in a lot of those areas. But um, as we examine the data and as we continue to have these conversations, um, and this is a question, I don't know, I I'm sure you've done it. But are we looking at, I know we're, we're dead last next to uh a county that didn't um report. Um, but we've been consistently this way um for years, as far back as I can remember. Um, what are other successful, the top five counties nationally, what are other communities doing that maybe we're just not capturing? What are those blind spots um that uh as far as initiatives and programs, it might be beneficial to Wyandotte County to uh help us um address some of these issues? Um, and not just looking at the symptoms, because there's a lot of symptoms here, but what are these actual causes? And and I I picked up on some of them, you know, crime, violence, um, um, you know, there's even factors of racism. But the biggest thing that that plays out to me is I've listened to the heat report, I've listened to the housing report, I've listened to you all now, and then you look at the maps, and it becomes ever more apparent that there's zip codes in this town that really were in redlined areas, areas that have been completely disinvested and disenfranchised, and it's costing people their lives. When you talk about life expectancy, that is the biggest concern for me. How do we improve the life expectancy? Because whatever we're not doing, people are dying. And so those are the things that I want to capture. How do we enhance and improve not just the quality of life, but the longevity of a healthy life for our residents? So, but but the longevity of a healthy life for our residents? So, but thank you all so much and appreciate your time. Motion to adjourn, please. Who made the first?
There was a motion and a second to adjourn.
We'll call McCarron and
Hi.
Ramirez.
Hi.
Kane. Markley. Stites. Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.